Six o'clock, I'd like to open up the meeting. And the first thing on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. There's one adjustment that I would like to make. Adding the Friends of the Woodbury School grant. For the town to act as a fiduciary for the grant. We'll put that under the Town Treasurers Report. Talk about it with Brandy. And then maybe another adjustment to the agenda. Let's start right out with the Select Board Governance and then
Yep.
And then we'll move into the rest from there. So what we need to do is appoint a Select Board Chair. And
I would make a motion to nominate Mike for the Select Board Chair.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Alright, and I'm fine with doing that, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, you know, I'm willing to continue on as the Secretary if you'd like. Basically, that means that I do the final draft of the Select Board meetings and post the warnings and stuff like that. I'm fine with continuing to do that too. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Public Comment. So I know we have a couple folks from town that are here, so Public Comment. You know, I guess I would try to limit you to five, 10 minutes. We could have a short amount of discussion, but I would like to be done by six fifteen at the very latest, so that we can move on to what else is on our agenda.
Sure.
Okay.
So Public Comment is, I can comment, anything having to do with town?
Yes, yeah?
Okay.
Or it could be even not having anything to do with the town.
Maybe you can talk about football or something.
Sure.
I like baseball better.
Okay. Coming soon. Yeah, I mean, you know, my main reason for being here is because I'm concerned about the system of governance that we have, you know, coming all the way from the top down to the local level here. And it keeps coming to my attention more and more vividly, and especially after town meeting, that there are some, what I would call dangerous trends that we're going in in terms of just accepting certain authority from outside of us without actually checking into what that authority is asking us to do as town officials and in terms of how we extract value from this town and how we bring value back into cover costs. And so one of the big things that stuck out at town meeting was the fact that the treasurer has accounts at the bank in her personal name.
I don't believe they're in her personal name. She is the person that oversees them, but I don't think it's
Their town of Woodbury.
Yeah, their town of Woodbury accounts.
She is the person in charge of the accounts.
It's like, you know, like I'm part of a small group where we have a checking and savings account. And I'm the signee on it, I'm the person that can write the checks, I'm the person that makes the deposits, and I represent a larger group. That's pretty much what, Brandy is our town treasurer. She, that's what she does with those different accounts. They're all in the name of the town of Woodbury.
The town of Woodbury, and she's the one who is authorized to
Yes, as the town treasurer.
To deposit and withdraw?
Yeah, she's elected, you know, as a three-year term to be the town treasurer. And that, you know, that's basically the town's stamp for her to be the person to do that.
Okay, because when she spoke at town meeting, I had the impression she was talking about her personal name being on the account.
Yeah, she's basically the signee.
Okay. So then going from there, the way that things were written on the agenda says that, you know, it doesn't specify that there are voters or taxpayers being assessed the tax. It says that the treasurer will receive the taxes. And so in terms of that being a legally binding article, to me, I don't know if anybody here
Well, the warning itself, you know, gets vetted by the Select Board and also by other government entities. So everything that's on there has been long ago vetted, so that the language has to be fairly precise.
Exactly. And this is my point. My point is that Article Four says, "Shall the town have its taxes paid to the town treasurer as tax receiver?" The next one, Article Five says, "Will the voters authorize?" Article Six says, "Will the voters authorize?" And so when you have specific wording coming from on high, it's not by mistake, right? And so when we look at the legal lawful ramifications of excluding any indication of where they're coming from, whether it's the voters, or the residents, or property owners, there is no, there is nothing here that indicates in Article Four in any kind of legal lawful binding way where they come from. And so there's, when we have this kind of obscurity in specific, specifically saying, you know, if it said, "The voters of Woodbury will be, will have their taxes paid, will be receiving a bill and paying taxes," and here it says, "To the town treasurer as receiver." It has the indication that there's a receiver, but there's no giver.
You know, Eric, I would suggest that if you have questions like this, you should take it up with the Secretary of State.
And so again, this plays right into what I'm talking about. So you're getting all of your legal information from the Secretary of State?
From the Secretary of State or other state officials that oversee municipal government, yes.
And so you, Michael, as a man, feel okay about them knowing what they're talking about in terms of authorities who are thinking about what is
I don't have the time to research all of this like you are doing.
Okay, and so this is, so
I am accepting
Absolutely, and so when we look at our system of governance, and if we believe in a democracy, it says that we, the people, are in charge.
We're a member.
We are a republic, but we aren't currently acting as a republic. We haven't since 1871. And this is, I mean, again, I'm not trying to tell you anything. You can look this up and decide for yourself. But in my opinion, we haven't been doing anything, I mean, the Continental Congress walked out, and the only way that Lincoln could get things back together was to have a non-living Congress. So again, so if we're talking about you being an official of this town and just taking whatever they say and assuming that they know whether we're in a democracy or a republic, whether they have any idea themselves, or they're just taking from someone above them, and we have all of this insulation of whatever the system is, if we assume we're in a democracy, which I don't, but we're acting as though we do, it says that we, the people, are supposed to be the ones who guide our leadership, whether it's you at the town level as the Select Board or the officials, or whether it's the representatives at a state level or at the federal level. And so that's what I feel like I'm here to do. And I'm saying, okay, I've done my scholarly research. I know my truth about what's going on. And so what I see going on here is, I see what we could call money laundering. I see what we could call extortion. And I see what we could call racketeering. And you can look up all three of those things for yourself and see what they mean in any dictionary you want. You know, whether you want to look at code in Black's Law Dictionary, or you want to look at cases in federal government or in local courts.
So Eric, for me, you know, I assume that all of the state statutes or whatever have been vetted over a number of years, 100, 200 years, and I'm just assuming that what the state requires us to do as Select Board members, as a town clerk, as a town treasurer has been vetted for a number of years, and that's the way it is. I'm not really out to challenge the status quo of government.
Right.
That's, just trying to make sure the roads are fixed and that we pay our bills.
Absolutely. And what I'm looking at is people who can't afford to have a warm house, can't afford to have food, can't afford to have good food, can't afford to have transportation, can't afford to live in a town, have to go to social services, can't have a quality of life that this country talks about having as a free country, you know? And I'm saying, what are we doing in our town with those, those members of our community in terms of, in terms of having this whole system that you say has been vetted? I'm saying the system doesn't work for a large majority of the people in our community.
You know, those things, we do have some small funds in town that try to help people in situations
I'm not worried about helping them. I'm worried about the system which fails and not putting Band-Aids on it and looking at the fact that
I don't think that's really up to town officials to change those things. That's more federal and state, you know, government
But again, if we go back to the governance thing, it says we, the people. We, the people, starting right here. We are the men and women on the ground.
And we, the people, vote for our representatives. That's how, that's my understanding of how this works.
Yes, yes, and you know the complications of that. Because we vote for those who have the backing and the money to be on the ballot. And if you want to look at the whole system in an honest way, it, not anybody can, not anybody's going to be backed by whatever corporate money is going to fund whatever candidate. And so what I'm looking at is the system is totally broken and that we actually are, I mean, even if we don't even, we people don't even look at the difference between the Treasury and the Federal Reserve, legal tender and lawful money. And again, you, you have the opportunity as a man yourself, as the Chair of the Select Board, to look it up if you're interested in what I'm saying, and see what this actually means. And it's very revealing if you just even Google the difference between, because they leave spaces for you to figure out. There is a huge difference, and it's actually fraudulent to pass legal tender. There's nothing backing it. And so when we're dealing with this, this becomes, you, you actually become, all, any of you who become officers and attach to this authority at the state level, which attaches to the federal level and beyond, you become accessories to crimes that may be being committed that you aren't looking into. And we know that ignorance of the law is no defense. So I'm just concerned about you guys on a local level not being, educating yourself as to what is going on and putting yourself in harm's way by attaching to ongoing crimes which are harming those of us who are marginalized in the system. And so that's, that's all I'm concerned about. I'm not going to try to tell you anything. I'm just going to say, I think it behooves all of us to do a little more scholarly research about how we're, how we've gotten here. And I don't, I don't see how anybody can say that we're in a rosy place right now, locally, state, federally, or worldly. That there's a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of people that I know who are feeling under pressure to be able to support their families, to be able to support themselves, and to work together that feels like a lot of extraction, all of these fees and, and taxes and, you know, rising goods and services when there aren't rising wages and benefits.
Yeah, and I don't really see how, you know, myself, speaking for myself, how I can change that at a local level, except to be aware, you know, of our own town budget and
And so would you be interested in communicating with someone like me who feels like he's done some scholarly research on the historical? I mean, for me, it's like a game of telephone, where we, we are all separated. You're doing your job, and you're just taking certain authority from the state level. And they're doing their job, and this is the way everything works. It works this way in the military, it works this way in governance, it works this way in politics, it works this way everywhere, whether you go to a hospital or anywhere else. There are certain people that have certain job descriptions, and there are people who are subservient to certain authorities.
I would ask you to, you know, go and ask these same questions to somebody like Senator Sanders or Senator Leahy, somebody in state government, you know, start working where you are pointing the finger at.
I'm pointing the finger at you.
Right.
Because they have, I don't have anything to do with them. They don't talk to me, they don't receive letters, they have other people. We don't have face-to-face human communication.
We don't really have any power to make any of these changes that you're talking about.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I feel like if we look at this, we have the most power right here. This is where all the vital records are. This is where all the land records are. If you go and read that charter, if you go and read everything in that vault, you know where we started here. You know that everything has come from the point on the land where we are.
One more minute.
Okay, that's fine. And so I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to get through the cognitive dissonance that we, as leadership in this community, need to, need to do a little more research about what we're, whose agenda we're serving. Whether we're serving a financial agenda, a social or political agenda. And they're all good people, they all, I believe, think that they're helping out. But I think we're so insulated at this point in this political, social, economic conundrum that we've created, that everybody assumes somebody knows what's going on. And I don't think any of us know what's going on until we actually take the time to do the research ourselves. And so I'm just putting that out there. And I'm not going away because I live here.
Okay. If you want to share your research, I'd be glad to, you know, try to take it in. But I don't have the time to do that myself, or frankly, the interest.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave some handouts of certain things for you guys if you're interested in reading them.
I'd be curious to see what you're, what you've come up with and study your thinking a little bit more. And you know, I agree with you in many ways. We do seem to be kind of trapped in a system, but that's the system that's, that we need to function in as far as I'm concerned right at the moment.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm saying, let's dream a little. Let's, let's see a world and a community where everybody is helping and everybody is able to live.
I would love to see it.
And so that's all I'm saying, you know? So let's, let's play out of this thing that we don't, that we're controlled in a certain system. Because I believe we have infinite ways of creating and changing anything that doesn't work for this community as a whole. Because I firmly believe that either it works for everybody or it doesn't work for anybody. You know, if there's one person, there is no collateral damage in living life. If we think, okay, we can marginalize that guy over there because he doesn't fit our way of living, it doesn't, it doesn't work with me. Because if I'm the guy who's being marginalized, or if you're the guy who's being marginalized, it doesn't work. And this whole mob mentality that the monocracy has created does that. You know, you can have 51% of the people okay with, you know, the watered-down solution, and 49% people not okay, and nobody's happy.
Okay, well, we gotta, we gotta get moving on to our agenda, okay?
Absolutely.
So you're welcome to sit in and see what we do on the other way.
I most certainly will, thank you.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, and then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last Select Board meeting, February 25th, 2019.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Brian and I will sign them.
I wasn't here. I'll take your word for it.
So next on the agenda is appointing town officials. And
I got you one.
Okay, alright. So I don't want to do the list, last meeting. There are some new, did you mention that you had somebody?
I have someone willing to be Emergency Management Director.
Okay, great.
Chance Payet.
Okay, I was hoping you'd make it. So I think what I could do is just read down through the list and the appointment, you know, the appointment, the position that they would be filling, and we could vote on them all at once at the end.
So you have quite a few names for
I do have quite a few names, yes.
You guys are busy.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to see Michael come.
So let me just put out through the list. So for Roe Foreman, Greg Parkers is willing to serve. Animal Control Officer and Dangerous Buildings Officer Kim Silk is willing to continue. Emergency Management Director Chance Payet volunteered to serve. On the Planning Commission, Skip Lindsey has volunteered to serve. And the Planning Commission did discuss that at their last meeting and thought that was okay. There's another person, we won't vote on him today, but while we're on the Planning Commission, Dave Barnowski is interested in serving. We're going to invite him to come to a Planning Commission meeting and, and just let him kind of see what's going on there. And then if he does want to, still wants to be appointed, we'll appoint him at our next meeting. Bob Martin is willing to be appointed as a zoning administrator.
Are you doing appointments?
Yes, we are. I am willing to continue as a Central Voluntary Planning Commission Member.
Excuse me?
Jane Noel Lordaral is willing to continue as a Central Vermont Solid Waste Management Director. I'm willing to continue as the Energy Coordinator. So, okay, I mentioned Chance already as the Emergency Management Director.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Skip Lindsey is willing to continue as the E-911 Coordinator. Ron Wells is willing to continue as the Tree Warden. Kim Silk is willing to continue as the Townkeeper. So I would make a motion that we appoint the following people that I've just listed verbally to their various positions for the year 2019 up until town meeting 2020. So from now until
Did you just say to do the Roe Foreman?
We did that, yeah.
Okay.
I listed that.
I have the letters, I have all the letters here.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Greg, Bob, Karen?
I can go over the list. So
Do you want to sign these while you're on?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So still, to appointments that we still are not sure about, the Woodbury Fund Committee, I haven't heard anything about the members that are part of that or the Hardwick Trail.
Yeah, they haven't filled any of those out yet.
And then, well, David Barnowski will hopefully be meeting with the Planning Commission next Monday and sort of the following Select Board meeting.
Do you even want us to be on the Planning Commission?
He's interested in being on the Planning Commission. That would fill our vacancy that we have, so. Okay, so there might be a few more appointments next, at our next meeting.
This is a letter from Forest and Parks about the Forest Fire Warden.
Okay, that's appointed by the screen.
Right, that you have to approve the appointment.
Yeah, they fill it out.
Alright, okay. So, do that. So, and now, would you, is your son willing to be the deputy?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so
I don't think that has to be for what the state does.
Okay, so that'll be
Just you appoint him.
Yeah, we could have any number of deputies, they said. It's just that not recognized by the state.
The term of office for your Forest Fire Warden pops already will expire June 30th this year. The reappointment process is generally a paperwork exercise. Reappointments are for a period of five years.
Okay.
Do I have to wait till June 30th to do that, or can we do it?
No, he's good until June 30th, so you could do it.
We could do it now, and just, I'll designate that in the motion.
Yeah.
So this will be a five-year term, last year it was a one-year term.
Yeah, so it's finishing grade this term.
Okay, so you're finishing grade this term, okay. So I would make a motion based on the state's recommendation that we appoint Paul Serudy as the Town Forest Fire Warden for a five-year term, starting July 1st, 2019, and terminating on June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll refuse.
So you need to sign it. And the other member needs to sign it.
Okay.
You don't have to sign it.
No, that's why I refused myself.
Don't want to have conflicts at the first meeting.
No.
And there's also a special thing to be signed for Jane Noel Morando, but you can do that when you do the rest of these.
Yeah, I'll sign them. Okay, so next on our agenda, the Town Treasurers Report. All set, Brandy? You're not, or do you want us to? We can wait a bit. Diana, are you ready to?
We're going on the bus first.
I'm willing to stall for them.
There's plenty more on the agenda for me.
We have 10 minutes before we get to the
No, that's, that's all kind of arbitrary.
So, who is going to be the one to sign the overweight permits?
I could do that as the Chair or, yeah, that's what I
Because what we decided to do last year was, instead of waiting for a meeting,
Right.
We just get them ready, and when somebody pops in, we just sign them.
Yep. So yeah, just let me know when there's somebody to be signed.
Okay. So moving along, I mean, we got through town meeting and that was a long week. Thank you all for your help. Brian went out to get the box out to Hardwick finally at seven o'clock, and, and the Haysen budget passed, and I didn't get yelled at for just sending one person.
That's right.
It used to be really strict.
Diana didn't notice.
Skip was going to bring the demolition contract.
I have the contract, yeah.
Oh, you're going to sign it?
I'm going to sign it, I have people just review it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we could, I mean, if you're, we could move into the old Woodbury store if you want.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of doing.
So
You'd already did, yeah.
So just to bring Paul up to speed, this is a contract that we have with Blue Mountain Trucking and Excavating for the
Demolish, yeah.
The demolition store, okay. And at our last meeting, there were terms for kind of a prepayment and which the contractor has agreed to. So he's basically sent us a signed copy of the contract. So if, if we approve it the way it's been written as a Select Board, then I'll sign it as the Chair and, and then we'll probably make a copy, send it back to him, and keep a copy. Maybe Brandy can start a file for this.
You're going to have to borrow some money at some point.
We're going to have to borrow a ton of money.
Yeah.
So when does that start?
That was one reason I was kind of insistent that you get the, the whole budget approved by the electorate just in case the bank comes back and says, "But people approved all this spending."
Nothing can happen, can go forward, until we're actually awarded the
Okay, so until we get the grant, we don't need to borrow money?
Yeah, till we get a notice, notification of being awarded the grant.
Kind of a timeframe, do you have a figure on that?
Well, Friday, Michael signed the latest version of the Amendment Application, the Third or Fourth Amendment, with all the new numbers. And since then, I did get one more thing that has to be signed. Environmental indemnification agreement that has to be signed by both of the landowners and the town and the state. And so I thought, oh my. But I emailed Kurt, because I don't have any, I don't have a phone or an address for him, but I emailed him, and he did email me right back. And so that was good. So he's still getting emails at that address, and I sent him a copy. And I told him which page needs to be signed and notarized. And I'll bring one by to Kim and have her sign and notarize the same thing. And then we'll let, the town will
So what is that form exactly? I think I sort of know, but I want to make sure.
No, I didn't, I just got it.
Okay.
It basically says, "The HMGP provides a process for local government through the state to apply to FEMA and receive federal funds for hazardous mitigation. The regulation provides eligible properties for acquisition. The regulation requires local government some guarantee to take steps to ensure that it did not acquire or include in an HMGP project properties contaminated with hazardous materials." So basically, this is, since we, this is all about getting the site cleaned up.
It sounds like what we've already done.
Yeah, I read it over today, and
So they just want us to sign off?
The town applied for federal funds for a project to acquire 3652 and 114, demolish the structures on the property and maintain use of the property as open space in perpetuity. The indemnitor is the owner of record of the property. That's why they have to be on the Colonel. So it's
Okay.
I'm not going to have you sign it, I have them sign it. I'm not going to have you sign it. I have them sign it, so.
Okay.
There's a signature page for the property owner, signature page for the town as the subgrantee, a signature page for the state of Vermont as the grantee, and a signature page for FEMA. One more little step. I emailed the attorney today, Sarah Field. She said they're hoping they can get out there this week, out here this week to start on the title search.
Oh, they haven't started that yet.
Right, so the title search, yeah, it's going to be too tricky.
I believe so.
Not that it's not like the survey. The survey's going to be tricky. But the title search, I don't know why they would have to go back more than forty years, which is a standard for a title search. And...
So will that phase one study in the, in the survey, does that have to be completed before FEMA will award the grant?
Actually, it doesn't because the phase one stuff is, in fact, all of the stuff leading up to the clean site letter is not required by FEMA. It's just we had to do it in order to get the clean site letter. So all of that stuff doesn't even enter, you know, many dollars that have been spent. Didn't, wasn't really, and they're not part of the grant that'll be reimbursable, not part of our match or anything like that because we're not paying for it. So... Yeah, they could, they can't get into it now because of all the snow. In a month or so, hopefully, they can get in there and finish that up. It shouldn't be that hard, but the survey might take a little. But no, I don't think that has to hold up. It'll probably, it might hold up our actual closing, but it'll hold up the grant award.
Okay, does Lauren have kind of a rough idea of how long it might take FEMA to...
Well, the one thing she said that was encouraging was that they really, at the Boston office, they really want to get this one done because it's like the tail end of the Irene grants.
Right.
So they're anxious to get it moving. So...
What's the rush rate?
So...
Yeah.
So the contractor, you know, we'll now have a contract for the demolition of the building. The contractor is aware that all of this stuff has to happen first before they...
So they're aware that they're not going to start doing a lot of things.
So they're just going to twiddle their thumbs and wait until...
And now Kurt has said that they're going to, after the closing, they're going to need thirty days to get their stuff out of there, but I don't know if that's really doable. I mean, there's only a few windows.
Yeah, I wouldn't say so either. Either he has it done before we close or...
Or we give him a week or something like that, but yeah.
Yeah, they're done.
Thirty days is a little much. I mean, if it was thirty days from now, that's one thing because you can't, it's hard to get in there, but it's going to be at least another month or more before we...
Before we get in there.
And so once we get our FEMA award letter, then we'll go to the bank and talk, start talking about money.
Yeah, that's when the loans will start happening, yeah.
And then we pay this and then it's reimbursed by FEMA like a typical grant.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the status. I sent that application in, I wrote the state indemnification, yeah, basically. Give a little bit more mail to you guys. So that's great. Chance is going to be the emergency management. Do a big red letter to that effect?
Sure.
Okay. Health officer, any?
They'll take yours on the health officer yet.
Health officer training opportunities. Um, spring select board institute flyers.
Yeah, I've gotten some flyers.
If you're looking at the...
If you're interested in going, I've been a couple times.
Saturday.
Is it pretty good? It's on the thirtieth, so.
Yeah, it's informative.
Saturday, the thirtieth, and it's in Rutland.
So you know, you can write down to get it if you want. It's down, usually it's a month later, but it's down in Rutland this year.
Okay, and there is one more thing.
But, yeah, it is pretty much tailored to kind of a general overview of what a select board person has to, you know, know and deal with. Then we get to ask questions, so.
Yep.
There's a couple more things from Mr. Graves. They're the same. Couple of more meetings about FEMA's upcoming risk mapping assessment and planning. Discovery meeting for the La Moya watershed. I mean, we only have a little bit of town that goes into the La Moya watershed.
A little bit in my yard.
Yeah, right.
I got some of each. I got my yard goes like this, so this way it goes to the...
So what goes to the...
This side of my lawn goes to the La Moya.
For the salt is the La Moya watershed, but...
I got both sides of it right on the crest of the hill.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll check this out and...
All right, what do we have?
I think I got one already. I get that magazine. If anybody else wants one, or I can, you know, give it to, see if there's someone on the conservation commission that's interested in it.
Okay.
So how do we feel about this contract? Are we okay with awarding, you know, signing it? Basically, I already awarded the contract. This is sort of the final...
Final part of it?
Final part of it. So I would make a motion that we sign the contract agreement with Blueberry Non-Trucking and Excavating for the future demolition of the old Woodbury store and barn.
Yeah, he was the low bidder of three bidders, maybe?
Four bidders, four bidders.
Yeah.
You're quite a bit lower than anybody else.
Yeah.
And his work credentials were better.
References are good, okay.
So he should be good with this person. Can I have a second on that motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I will sign it.
So you have sort of kept track of this whole FEMA project thing, but if at any point, I'd love to show you through my file of paperwork.
Very thick file.
Pretty good.
I've got everything. I mean, this is a box.
My Irene file disclosed in three years ago, so you guys are further behind the wheel. It took five years to resolve. I got a file into this thing.
So there's a, when you talk, that's the next thing on your, well, when you talk about the grade school, you'll want to remind people that there is a meeting on Friday night at six at the...
At Hazen?
No, at the same place, at the elementary school.
And the gym, yeah.
I've asked if they could send me an electronic copy of the agenda so I could put it on front porch for them.
This is at the Woodbury Gym.
No, it's at the...
Hard, Hard Rock Gym, Hard Rock.
It's the one, you were there, I think, before.
Yeah, same place as last time.
What was the date on that one again?
Friday.
Friday.
That's Friday. Six P M it starts.
I think the reason they chose Friday was because they wouldn't have to be fussing about conflict with basketball or because David seemed to have that number, that date available.
Thinking quicker because it does kind of conflict with preparations for the time breakfast.
Yeah, we're letting David and Jared.
They can't, can't satisfy everybody, but they can satisfy the people who are using the room.
But there were a number of people there at the last meeting that will be involved with getting ready for the time breakfast.
That's good, yeah.
There would be less, potentially less Woodbury people there to vote. And I assume they'll vote by time, but...
That's the act forty-six updates.
Yeah, so we're actually, so we'll see if our town treasurer is ready to come in and then we'll...
She's been wandering around.
Got a chair? Come on in.
You can get your old seat back if you like it. Anybody else here from the school?
No, they actually have a meeting tonight and I was basically just planning on updating the select board on what's happening with the lease committee and what's happening with the RFP for the roof. It was more updates rather than kind of the continued discussion that we've been, that we've been having. They, I think they have a meeting tonight for the new supervisory supervisor of the...
Michael, do you want me to contact Remo with excavation? Tell him that the contract was signed tonight?
You can if you like, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll ask Diana to send him a signed copy for his...
Yeah, and we'll have Diana or Brandy start a new file for that, so we'll have it.
Once the snow leaves, we'll have a...
Be a couple, three months before the snow.
A pre-demolition meeting?
Yes.
Optimistically.
There's some pretty good banks around the store right at the moment.
If it warms up too fast, we got big problems.
Yeah, we... Is, maybe Brandy isn't ready. Is she there?
I think she went home.
Really?
Get up in despair.
Do you want us to continue on? Are you ready? Okay. Brandy was ready.
And Michael, Brian, and Paul.
So, yeah. And then we have a couple things on the list to go over, the mowing RP and the grant to friends of the Woodbury School.
Yep.
I know there were a few comments on the sort of changes in the presentation of the bills.
Yes.
And I think it's fine to break them up like that, but once, you know, the one thing that I found hard was with the itemized, with each invoice itemized without a total and then the check was written for the total, it was...
As far as, are you referring to like the telephone?
Yeah, or any of those.
When it's split, yeah, across three different places, yeah.
I did figure that one out.
So Diana, I make a copy of, right, and if I did, if I embed them like the library with the town, they're not going to be in alphabetical order and then you're going to have to have the top sheet that's signed off by the library board. And those are, you're not, it's not going to be grouped. That's why I decided to separate it. I mean, I can make copies, but then you're going to think you're going to need two other checks.
I think, I think it's fine now that we sort of know what to expect. The other, the other thing that I was thinking of is like, that's, there were a whole series of invoices on the highway budget for one of the arts dealerships.
And I have to ask you the reasoning for that and I have to itemize it because the issue that Laura's coming upon is stuff that's being returned. And there's quite a few and then there's credit and if I don't itemize them, say he has five things and it all goes to this vehicle, well, I can't break that apart in my system because it's clumped.
Could you, in the, in the pink part that we have where they all are itemized, could you come up with a total at the end that reflects the same amount that's written on the check? Just for our clarity and would that screw up the NEMRIC system?
It doesn't. It doesn't show at the end of IDL auto. It doesn't show you the totals.
No, no, there were some others like that too, though.
I'll have to play with it.
Okay. If it's not...
It's part of the reporting, so...
Right, if it's not workable, then that's fine, but I always like to...
But if you did it in typically, when I would do just a standard one, it always gave the totals.
I remember before that the totals were there.
Yeah, I was thinking we chased the totals down.
Yeah.
I'll play with the report.
Okay, all right, and it doesn't work.
I just thought it'd be easier to separate it this time and while I got a bunch new on the table.
Right, I think, I don't have no objection to them being separated like I just, it's, you know, I always like to check the total with the...
To the listing of what's going.
What's on the check, yeah, just to, and I'm too lazy to add them up on my, on my own, yes. But if it doesn't work, if that's going to confuse the system, then we'll just do it.
I'll see what it can do. It does give you a whole bunch of options, so I'll play with it a little bit.
It would be nice if it did have the totals that were seen.
The grand total, yeah, there's ones that, yeah, have multiple.
If it's doable, if you have to do something too crazy.
So...
So on your balance sheets, you'll see a negative and the only reason you're seeing that is because I'm currently doing a cash receipts deposit.
I have a few.
So it's showing, so I'm not transferring any money because I know I have that on me to make a deposit, so...
So it's a negative because you haven't made a deposit yet?
Correct. I'm still entering it into cash receipts.
Okay.
So, and I was hoping to get through that, but, yeah. So I'm working that as soon as I kick back out to the other room.
Okay. Is there anything else on the ledger that you'd like to draw our attention to, or...
Due to, due from, so on your balance sheet, you have a due to, due from of...
Right here.
Four hundred and fourteen thousand. So this is a report that's, that's generated explaining. So these are all of our funds. We have fourteen funds and explains the breakdown. If this is offset at all, it means that I owe funds, money.
Got it.
And I need to fix it.
Okay.
So this is showing just where we're at with each fund right now.
Okay.
Do we have it in here?
Nope.
No.
And I can, I can generate this for all of you if that's something you want, that you want.
Yeah, going forward.
Going forward, yes.
So, yeah, therefore I did give you a cash receipts of income that came in. We had quite a bit of delinquencies, so that's jumped down. We are down to... I'm working that so down. So we're down to eighty-four thousand for delinquencies. I'm, have been getting in prepaid's already, which is nice. So, yeah.
Do you track prepaid's as far as...
They live on here or...
Yep, so...
Prepaid, all down here.
Prepaid's are down here.
Okay, prepaid access.
And then when I go into, into my credits, into tax admin, it'll give me the breakdown of list of everybody, so I... Once tax bills are generated, I apply all the credits each individually beforehand. And I send them, so those are my happy notes. Ah, you only owe this much. Another happy time.
A happy guy, just a happy...
Any questions for Brandy about that at this point?
So, yeah, it'll be a little getting used to.
Absorbing right away.
Yeah.
So this is only the general fund and the highway.
Not the library or...
The breakdown, right. And at any point, it's just multiple and multiple pages, doing financial statements for the rest, but if there's any question moment that you want the break down.
And this is that new NEMRIC system that we're using and everything is, it's pretty detailed, as you can see. And we're, you know, still tweaking it some time.
Everything's a super budget coded to...
Oh, yes.
He has a full file, yeah.
Yep, and it reflects last fiscal year budget and actual in this.
So you can see where it works, yeah.
And it's broken down.
It's like for us every month, too.
Yep, the general.
Good thing to have for knowing where you're at.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, the general budget and then the highway budget are two separate things, yeah.
So going on, as far as the friends of W E S. So an email was sent to us, Michael and I, asking if we will be the money holders of a grant that I call it the PTO received for the study going forward in the wetlands as far as the walk, the...
The dock.
The dock.
Dock, yeah. Yeah, this is a...
It'll be...
A grant for a...
A grant that Elizabeth Stratton has been working on for a new dock.
She was granted the grant. We would hold it and it's an in and out, so it's going directly. I'm depositing it and then I'm cutting a check for it to go right straight out. There's no monies left.
Somebody's building it for them and it's going to... It's one check in, one check out, basically.
So the board needs to agree on that decision and then I can move forward. She would drop off the check and...
So what we're agreeing to be is the fiduciary kind of agent for, for that grant money?
I will have to add an item line. I have not, I don't know. I will create an item line and it'll be in there for the next three years.
Do we need to do that tonight or at the next meeting, or...
I think we could do that. We aren't spending any money or...
Of our own.
Yeah, we're just making a commitment to, to basically be the...
Accounting.
Be accounting for the... So I would make a motion that... So I would make a motion that we, that the Town of Woodbury serve as the fiduciary agent for the Friends of the Woodbury Elementary School for our grant award that they've received for a project in the, in the, in the wetland area, the school wetland. All in favor?
Alright. So I will take care of that, make copies, and then I'll have a file obviously in the vault once it's completed.
So one other thing I have under the Town Treasurer is the, um, the mowing RFP for the cemeteries and the, and the town properties. We have pretty, pretty much done a yearly, um, RFP for the mowing, and last year with the Cemetery Commission, we talked about making it a three-year contract, like we did with the winter sale this year. It just, it saves a small amount of money and it costs, you know, a fair amount to send out.
Time and money, yeah.
Time and money, basically, yes. And so I just want to make sure that we're okay with doing that. I spoke with Richard Patton as a member of the Cemetery Commission, and you know, he actually asked me if we were gonna do that when I first started talking with him.
Yeah, good.
So, um, so this would be a request for a profo proposal to different contractors for this year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, starting on May fifteenth. We will post this, probably send it to people who have submitted bids in the past.
They get it in the Gazette, maybe?
Yeah, it'll go in the Gazette. And then we'll, together with the Cemetery Commission, we'll open up the bids. And, um, what they've done in the past is that they've made the decision and made the recommendation to us.
Send me the electronic copy. Do you have the changes you wanted to make?
Just, um, just a question that I have for you. Uh, yeah, this is actually an older, so I'll send down the, for this reason. So, and then Richard Patton also agreed to serve as the person, if any of these contractors have questions, you know, there's information for them to call him.
Clerk of the Works?
Yeah, Clerk of the Works, exactly, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, um. So another, you know, there's a date on here for the, um, April eighteenth, so and we'll open it, open them up probably at the following Select Board meeting.
And hopefully the snow will be gone by, how long will it take?
Yeah, by May fifteenth. Yeah, yeah. So, um, I guess first of all, I'd just like to make a motion that we send out a bid, a request for proposal for a three-year contract as opposed to a one-year contract as we've done in the future. Let me make sure that we're all okay with that. So I would make a motion that the request for proposal and the contract for the town cemetery mowing and the town property mowing be, um, the three-year contract starting with the year two thousand eighteen.
Right, well, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, um.
We'll take turn.
I'll change, I'll just delete this question that I had for Diana.
Yep.
And I'll send it down tonight or early tomorrow morning.
That's fine.
And that includes the town's new plot?
Yep.
Yeah, the, the park, little park, yeah.
And eventually the old store.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Now, that also gonna be, we've been kind of picking up the area around the town hall. It doesn't always get done. Is that contemplated here? Cause it's that strip of land in between and behind that belongs to the town.
Oh, the little island.
Diana had added the island, but you're talking just about around the town hall.
Trying to cut back on the work the guys are having to do.
Cause the town hall sits on Jessica's land, so who mows it?
Well, we've been doing it, they were doing it.
They were, yeah.
Now it's come back, it's not getting mowed again unless one of our guys does it. So I was wondering if we could include that on there.
And we had added the strip last year with the trees, the new trees were added, the island.
I guess.
So I guess it can be added for discussion once the interviews or.
Yeah, I'm just gonna throw it out there, cause like we're doing it just.
Yeah, they're in town mowing, it's, it's around the town hall.
Is that property belong to the, the building, that, that, you know, the apartment building that's there?
Excellent question. I, I don't really answer that question.
I'm pretty sure it is from what we've found in the past. The town hall sits on their land.
If the town hall stops using it, it reboots back to them.
I guess let's.
Still do maintenance and it's.
The way I understood it was the town owned the land unless the restriction was enforced.
That's, I'll ask Robin Durkey that question.
Yeah, I think, I've been pulling this D one time and it said pretty clear on it. It's a messy area.
It'll be good to pull the D and say it, cause I'd always heard just the opposite, that they owned the land under the town hall.
I think if you pull, I think I remember seeing it once, I had to pull it.
Yeah, we should ever pull that for us for the next meeting.
And then we figure out we're gonna mow it anyway, cause we're getting quite a bit, we're having to mow when it's starting to be.
And again, lately I've seen them parking on both sides.
Yeah, that's been problematic, yeah. We've had some issues yesterday with all the trucks coming and going with us.
I, I have spoken to them a number of times about that.
I don't know if we need to at some point paint lines there or something.
It's hard to see this time of year.
This time of year, it's gonna be tough.
Though they, I, I had a verbal understanding with them that they were to park all in a row on one side.
Yesterday they were, we couldn't get our trucks through there, but the snow's not helping either.
So I just need to call them again, and I guess if, you know, I'll call them one more time. I've spoken to them three times so far this winter about that. And then I guess the next time.
Do you just send them something in writing saying that we're gonna tow it if it's in the way?
The other problem is they parked right in front of the town hall steps. They're supposed to be able to park there.
They have, there's an agreement that that's okay to do.
Okay.
But if it's in use, then they have to move it.
If they're in use, yeah, yeah, but they're, Robin, Robin lets me know if the town hall is gonna be in use and I let them know and they make sure that the car is.
Sounds like the apartment's up for run April first and might be new tenants coming.
Uh-huh, but it'll still be a parking issue, especially in the winter. And, and the understanding was that, is that they would park three cars because there's only room for two in front of their building. And then we got an agreement with Robin that they could park in front of the town hall, so they'd be in a single row. So there's a lane open for fire trucks and the plow. So, and I called them about it a couple of other times too. So, call them again, and I guess what I'll tell them is that, um, you know, that we'll probably send them something in writing so that, um.
Yeah, send a copy of that same piece of paper that they've seen.
Yeah, there is, there is actually a form that P-Trans has given me and we used it when the truck was parked in the road on Dock Road. And Greg has copies in case there's other incidents like that, he can kind of leave it on the car.
Yes, it is paint, cause that is a nice way for you guys to get in and be able to back that in, and it's been used for that.
Forever.
Forever.
Cause the other problem we'll run into too is Greg and Greg can't, or Tim can't get in the plow close enough to the front of the building when they're up against the town hall steps, so end up having to shovel out there five or six feet instead of three feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a question, is, is that a town street or road?
I think even if it was never designated, it's been used for such for fifty years, so it has become it because of that.
Okay, well.
So I'll wait to receive that, I'll issue it in the Gazette, and then, yeah, we'll be good to go.
We'll get started on that.
I'll be.
Greg?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a question on that, you might call Paul Gillis and he would clarify it for you. It's a right away project.
Part of the confusion was is that when there was a zoning board meeting for the apartment in the store, the zoning board sort of gave, you know, told them that they had two parking spots by the island, so.
Well, right in front of their steps.
Right, well, actually no, right across, you know, by the island too.
Oh, really? Cause I thought I saw a pa- paper on that, but they didn't show it being out there. I thought they left that one.
Something in the D about parking spots, so.
But, yeah, it's gotta be cleaned up, so that, you know, these guys can get in and out in a timely fashion over there.
So, um, next thing on the agenda, we're actually fairly close to the timeframe too.
Yeah.
So I had intended to update the Select Board on the lease committee that was formed between the Select Board, the School District Board, and concerned Woodbury residents. To trying to come up with conditions of use that we could send to the lawyers.
Conditions for the use of the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that they, you know, could help form the lease, and that we were gonna be working with both the, the School District has hired a lawyer named Paul Giuliani, and then we have our Town Lawyer, Paul Gillis. They were gonna work, work together on the lease. And, you know.
You don't have anything yet?
No, no, the lease, the lease committee met once, we met, was it last? I think it was a week before last on Thursday, the Thursday before town meeting. And there was a question that came up concerning the RFP for the roof repair. And, and that the, the owner, it was stated in the RFP that the owner and the contact person and the order of the contract would be the Woodbury Select Board, the Town of Woodbury. And actually Norman raises a question, well, should it be the Town of Woodbury or should it be the Woodbury School District? So we sent that question to the lawyers, cause, you know, just to clarify that, and finally heard back from them today regarding that, so, and it from, I have the emails and Paul Gillis's letter to us. Both of the lawyers are suggesting that it be the Town of, the Woodbury School District that awards the contract. Let me, let me just read, let me read what Paul Gillis sent to us. It's a few paragraphs. So, um, Article Six of the State Board's November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen decision states no later than June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, the forming district shall convey to the new union district for the sum of one dollar in other good and valuable consideration and subject to the encumbrances of record, all of their school-related real and personal property, including all land, buildings, and contents. So we had two questions for Paul and Paul. One was about selling the wetland property, fifteen point six acres according to the listers that the Woodbury School District owns, of selling that to the town. And then how, how should the school district do that, and how should the town receive that? And they're suggesting that the school district not sell that to the town, and that's what this next paragraph is in answer to. So the fifteen point six acres could not be sold to the town. The school district could create a reversion of the land to the town by deed to thwart an attempt to sell it. And I'm assuming by that statement that he means the attempt of the new union district to sell it to somebody other than the town if they deemed that they weren't gonna use it. The school, school district would convey it to the town, and the town reconvey it to the school district, reserving the reversion. And I, I'm not quite sure what all that means, maybe Norman does. But it, it seems to be a legal way for the town to have some protection that that land would remain town property if the new union district does decide at some point in the future that
They don't need it.
They don't need it, so they don't sell it to, to someone, to someone else besides the town. And then with the question of, um, the RFP and who should oversee the, the contract and the wording of the contract. Both lawyers mentioned Section four zero two nine of Title sixteen, which has been raised as a possible bar to sales of schools to towns. And Stephen Murphy, one of the School District Board members, has, um, has brought up in some of our meetings and reflecting an email exchange that he had with the, somebody from the State Education Board named Donna Russell Savage. So as Stephen Murphy's exchange with Donna, and I have that here in my pile of paper, if you'd like me to read it. Donna Russell Savage reflects, I'm assuming the State Board's agreement is enforceable, so part of the state's opinion is that, you know, the town doesn't have any right to the property at all, even if we have a deed. But I don't, so Paul Gillis says, but I don't see a way to avoid conveying the property to the new district.
That was Gillis or?
Yeah, that was Paul. That's actually, he's kind of sending back a, a joint statement from the two.
And I suppose as long as we protect ourselves with the deed that goes out here, that it's gotta come back to Woodbury, then it.
With, with the lease, yeah.
With the lease, yeah.
So the roof work was approved last year, so that paragraph, you know, basically is reflecting, you know, going forward, if we have a lease and agreement, and you know, part of the working on this lease is to have it work for the time that there is a Woodbury School District, and also to have it work for the future when there is a new union district. So there, and there's, the entity of the Woodbury School District is, is gone. So at some point, the two, our, the school district lawyer and our town lawyer will need to work with, it appears that it would be the supervisory union lawyer to come up with a lease agreement that the super, the new union district, and I don't know if there's a distinction between the new union district and the supervisory union, except they oversee a number of union districts.
So are they working on that now?
What we're, what we're, you know, what we've discussed as the lease committee is to try to have a document that, come up with a document that our two lawyers can put together that works for both the school district and the town. And then have those lawyers work with the third lawyer representing the new union school district or the, and I assume that would be the supervisory union, to have a lease agreement that could carry forward after two years. So we would have time, you know, what we would like to do is have a lease together as soon as possible so that for the rest of this fiscal year to July first, there is a lease agreement between the town and the school district that works. And that will open up the door for the roof work to go through without any, any legal confusion as far as as far as it appears. So, um, so Paul Gillis has said the roof work was approved last year by the school district. And RFP is ready to go, except it's unclear whether the school district should be involved or whether the town and or the school board, school district should be doing this jointly. And those were the questions that we had posed to the two lawyers. And then, because the school is owned by the town, the Select Board should be involved. The school board and the Select Board should open the bids together, decide on an award of the contract, and jointly oversee the construction. As the funds have been appropriated by the voters of the school district, the Woodbury School District should pay for the improvements. So, um, by doing that, we would get past, at least this is my understanding, we would get past the question of well, who actually has the money and can the school district give the money to the town to pay for the, for the roof?
So we don't have to cross that bridge, yeah.
So, and it sounds like from what the lawyers have told us, that is that the school, the town and the school district could work together to put out the RFP, which is all ready to go. Skip has it all, all ready to go out.
Good.
And then we, you know, it could come, it could stay, then it would come here to the town office. And then when it comes time to open the bids, the two entities would be here to open them and, and we would award the bid.
So the bids should be going out pretty soon.
Well, that's the thing, we wanna put the RFP out as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the key thing there, of course, is that, yeah, and that, and what he wrote, that, that the contract is signed by the school district.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So they have a contract.
That was the question.
So the school has to put out the RFP?
Uh, no, I would think, I think the RFP can go out. We'll definitely, you know, we've been talking to Patrick and the school board is aware that we could put it out jointly. Or we could just put it out.
Yeah, there's no problem putting it out, the idea of who signs it. Yeah, there's no problem putting it out, the idea of whose, his point, your lawyer's point was, the entity assigns the contract.
Right.
This is school. So you've got one all ready to go out?
It's ready to go.
Yeah, there is some, I looked at it this afternoon quickly. There is other wording where it does state that the owner is the town of Woodbury.
It does.
And then there are other parts where it might be good to make sure whether it should be the Woodbury School District or the town of Woodbury that's mentioned.
Well, the reason why I put it in is because the town of Woodbury does own the building.
We are the owner, yeah.
Right, before, when this initially went out last year, it was the Woodbury School District was the owner of the building. So we all know that's changed.
Yeah. So, you know, and I don't know whether they mean by owner, the aworder of the contract?
No, no, and I kept it ambiguous as to who was going to open the bids on April 11th. Which is April 8th.
Liberally right.
Yeah. They're just trying to put out the bidding.
Yeah, so we need to get this out.
You worked that, finding that out with that one, you go to sign it?
If I get all positive, the select board says okay, then I can get this cleaned up, get the draft off of it, do my last, you know, word check on it and get it ready to go. I'll write up a small blurb that we can put in local publications.
Yeah. And.
Will you do that tonight?
Well, I'd like to make sure that we have an okay from Patrick Flood as this school district chair. I know he's looked at it, he's looked at it.
The last email I saw from Patrick is that he thought it was ready to go.
We give it the okay pending his okay.
I mean, I would like to just get, because his email has been down for a couple of days now, so.
Lucky him.
So if we okayed it tonight, then it'd be pending Patrick's okay on it.
Yeah, I'd like to have this.
Then you might be able to get right on it.
Right, that is no more delay. It needs to go.
It needs to go.
Yeah, so we gotta get it signed.
Soon as the roof's free.
So do you have a copy for us to sign or is that?
You don't sign it.
We don't need to sign it.
No, it's just a proposal, yeah. So I need a proposal.
So.
Make a motion to approve the proposal?
I'll second.
Okay, Paul and Taylor?
Hi.
Okay.
Here's a copy, here's a draft copy with all the dates on it.
All right, so you can let Patrick know that and he can give his blessing.
I have three roofers that we could send this to. Are there, I just didn't know if you guys might know of some other folks. I have Rod Roofing, Burrell, Danville's Town and Greasy Roofing. Are there any others, you know, larger roofing contractors?
I'll have to look around, I guess.
I have someone that wants a copy as well.
Okay, I mean, it's going to go out in the newspaper and stuff too, but I thought, you know, we could send it to.
Can't be on the website as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I would take a copy because I know, we said Kirk Thompson was talking about his.
Yeah, he was.
Boy and another guy that do roofing, so I'd get them a copy. They've got all the stuff.
As long as they can do the work.
Right, yeah, it's a big project.
It's a big project, a long way up there.
Yeah.
It's a long way down.
I'll take a copy too, so I can look at it.
Okay, yeah.
That's just a.
So this is just, so we'll have a copy here at the town office or you could request one to be mailed to you. I'll write your, that you would like a copy right now so that we don't forget.
Am I, do I have access to all copies of everything you guys are looking at?
No, no, I don't think you need copies of the.
No, but do I have access, is this privileged, all of these different sheets from the Treasury and clerk and everything else?
These are all public documents.
It's like if you.
Yeah, I mean, if you want the email exchanges about, you know, the, all the confusion and legalese of coming up with a lease agreement and the RFP.
I find that very interesting, yeah. You just have to put a public records request in.
So good, we can get this thing over?
Yes, sir.
So the lease committee is going to meet again this week and hopefully we'll be able to come up with some of the terms of use that we can send on to the lawyers. That'll be hopefully a goal for.
Have they seen, have they seen their notes from the last meeting? Because I've been sent to them.
They haven't, no, I haven't sent them either.
Okay, so they were drafted, maybe we'll go over that on Thursday and then we'll finalize them and get them out to the lawyers so they have it.
And you know, I, I mean, this is my, my understanding of what the lease agreement will be is basically we're just trying to have written documentation of what's happened for the last 60 or 70 years. You know, just the way the school district has used the building, the way the town has used the building. I think that's, you know, we kind of just want to have it be documented the way it, the way it's.
In the lease.
Yeah, yeah, in the lease. And those will, you know, those will serve as encumbrances, especially for the town going forward with this merger with a new union district.
Michael, if you're getting back to the RFP, if you're the least bit nervous about the title of it, if you look at the title page, it says the town of Woodbury, I could also include Woodbury School District.
I think it would be good anywhere where it says the town of Woodbury to also include the Woodbury School District.
Is that their, is that their formal title, is the Woodbury Elementary School District or the Woodbury School District?
I think it would be the Woodbury Elementary School District.
Yeah, maybe Patrick would have a better idea of that too, because I don't know what the answer to that would be.
Right, yeah, that would be something, but, I mean, through grade six, that's generally considered elementary school. You know, we've always called them the Woodbury School District, but, you know, and then there's the Hazen Union School District, so. She might know, yeah, actually it's. So, and I think I've, I know I sent, I think I sent this, Paul Gillis is, I found this stuff this morning. And I think I sent to both of you guys. And there is, if you want, there is more back and forth. Norman, Skip, Patrick and I were communicating about, you know, just the RFP and the lease and the questions. Because we hadn't heard back from the lawyer yet, so.
Couldn't have the lawyer's in on it.
Yeah, no, I was, I was really happy to see that this morning. And apparently Paul had sent, had sent this last week, but I never saw it.
I didn't see it either.
Yeah, so, so he sent, actually sent this, the statement that I read as an attachment about this. He had sent it, I think, last Friday, so.
The name of the check is the Woodbury School District.
Okay, so, yeah, so I would think anywhere where it says the town of Woodbury, maybe having a slash on Woodbury School District is to.
I can do that.
Yeah.
It'd be simple to do.
Okay, anything else?
Well, once you get that done, we don't want to wait another two weeks to get this out, right? So should we either have a draft or just?
Well, what, the next, you know, the next thing, you know, is for us to get, communicate to the lawyers to put together the lease. And we wanted to try to have that done in a month and it's been almost two weeks.
Do we need to have the lease in hand before we put out the bids for the roof?
No, we don't.
So the bids for the roof need to go out?
They're going to go out as ASAP tomorrow, yeah. It would be good to have the lease in hand when we open up the bids and when the contract gets awarded by the.
That shouldn't be a big deal.
That should be April 11th, it should be done by then.
Yeah, so these will.
I'm being optimistic.
So these will start going out.
The snow might be melting by then.
To the newspapers and such tomorrow, whatever.
I'd like to get it in the Gazette this week.
Right, it actually might be up tomorrow morning, they could squeak it in.
You have till tomorrow.
Yeah, Monday is sort of.
Get the Gazette guy right here.
Tomorrow, right.
They can.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that'd be great, get that in. Like I said, it's, time's running out, we need to get moving, yeah.
Anything, so, yeah, so, you know, the hope is to have the lease finished and signed by both entities in time, by the time the bids are open. That'll be a good kind of deadline goal. And this will be just between the school district and the town, so, and, you know, these two lawyers are working together. They understand the situation pretty well. I think, you know, once we give them, the lease committee gives them that information about, you know, the uses of the building by both the town and the school district, I think, I think they would be.
Yeah, plenty to work on.
Anything else, Skip or Norman, anything else about the RFP or the?
No, just, the whole thing about the wetland, just to clarify what went on with that, because all of us have seen where other towns have done similar transfers. Apparently those were done before the final ed board decision. And that put the hammer down in terms of not being able to do it further, so now they're saying we can't do that transfer. We need to do that other type of arrangement to deal with it, that's how come that happened that way.
Okay, do you understand that arrangement? Because I, you know, I'm reading it, I don't understand, it's just what would happen, but I can.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, well, that prevents the transfer from happening and they'll take care of it as best they can in the documents.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Norman.
Either of you want a copy of the draft? I'll send, you know.
I prefer just an electronic copy.
Okay, yeah, I like paper.
So.
I keep files on the computer.
I assume that Skip will send us the digital version of the final draft, or actually, I don't want to have draft on it.
Right.
But.
Skip will send that out by nine o'clock.
He's going to be done tonight.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, perfect. Okay, yeah, and then. Okay, okay, so let's move on to the next. Just arrange my papers, okay. So next on the agenda is the Local Emergency Management Plan. This is a yearly plan that the town is asked to put together and it's due by May 1st. So we're going to try to get it done by May 1st this year. Sometimes we've been kind of late.
Is this just a matter of updating last year's?
It's a, there's a little, it's pretty much a matter of updating it. They have changed it, they've changed it a little bit and I can send you information about the changes. But, you know, it used to be called the Local Emergency Operations Plan. And now it's called the Local Emergency Management Plan. And there is a letter that came from the Vermont Emergency Management Agency about the reason for the changes. It's basically the same information and what they're, but they've kind of categorized it a little bit so that it's a little bit easier to organize and they're basically, one, two, three, four, about six different categories. So we get this checklist of required elements rather than filling out, and there is a short form that we would fill out. They basically want to know if the town has adopted a national incident management system, which has been asked previously, contact information for local authorities, which we've given them in the past. And then the fact that it's been adopted by municipality, basically the select board. So there's that component, just confirming that we've completed all the adoption forms. And then they would like a list of the people that worked on the emergency management plan. They would like a listing of the Municipal Emergency Operations Center and who the authority is for that and who the staff positions are. And then under, you know, have a listing of emergency purchasing agent and what the spending limits would be, municipal contracts that might be in place, made in place during the emergency and then a list of local resources. And then public information, there's a new entity called Vermont Alert, which you probably know about. I know.
Not a whole lot of it.
I don't know a whole lot about it either. And then a list of media outlets, public notice places. And then some of the new things is that they would like a list of, they call it vulnerable populations, so. So they're really encouraging us to come up with, you know, like local kind of neighborhood folks that might, you know, if there's, say there's an elderly person living in a house and it was a neighborhood kind of designated person who might just go and make sure that, okay, and check in with whoever the emergency management director would be in case of some type of emergency. And then just a whole list of contact information for the town. And then the other, just, you know, they want a little bit of more information about the emergency management, the shelter, emergency shelter. So it's a little more involved, but it is pretty much the same.
Yeah, so we have, I know we have that plan, we just have to update it. We throw Chance right under the bus on this one.
Yeah, when we had that last power outage, that was a real pain and it really kind of identifies lack of information.
Yep, it does.
Yeah, we got no idea, there's no place to go and say, how long do you think this is going to be?
Correct, that's the same problem we ran into back in the 90s when it happened.
Yeah, and I would have thought that they'd have changed that, we need to either get together with Hardic Electric or something. There needs to be someplace that especially towns can call and say, what's happening? What can we tell our people in town?
Because we don't know what to ramp up, people, you know, do we start ramping up? Is it a two-hour event, is it a four-hour event?
Yeah.
Like earlier this winter when both the power and the phones were out, we couldn't call, cell phones.
Well, I drove to Hardic, but you can't find anybody when you go out there that you can ask and say, okay, is this two hours or two days or?
And one of the, one of the things that's a little puzzling is that a lot of this is set up like you can just, you know, go online and get the information you need or report information.
And a lot of this contemplates more urban areas than we're dealing with. Because one of our problems with the, particularly the vulnerable population is the transient nature of that.
Right.
Now this week someone's vulnerable, next week they're not.
Right, yeah, so it is hard to nail this down.
We have that registry, that Skip started, the CARE registry.
Oh, really?
Yeah, remember, you tried to get people signed up, it's on the website.
Yeah, that was part of the local hazard.
Right, the same idea, looking for, it's not like we have a large elderly housing complex or something like that.
But when the power's down, you can't access it through the, right.
Through the internet, if there are no phone lines, you can't call somebody out.
Can't call somebody, yeah, so, yeah, it's.
Cell phones don't work.
Yeah, that really bugged me the other night, because I rode out there a few times, rode around trying to find a Hardic electric truck. Say, hey, you know, what do you know? So, yeah, that's been a problem and it's still a problem. There's got to be a better way for those guys to communicate with us.
Yeah, and the type of emergency where all of this would kick in, chances are the phone lines and the power lines.
We're going to be in the same boat with no phone, no power.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that's a question, you know, we do have, there's a woman from the Vermont Emergency Management, Emily Harris, and they're the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, I'm forgetting his name. But they're, you know, we can get, they're on board to help us put this thing together. So, you know, what I'm thinking of is maybe just tonight, we have, we have a new emergency management director who can be a part of this, I'm glad to work on it. And, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure who else.
So probably, I think we could reach out to Chance and.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with Chance.
Then we could have a meeting and just work on it.
Right, yeah, we could, we could do it as part of a select board meeting or we could just have.
It'd be done in an hour or so, I guess.
Yeah, or maybe just get together as a.
At a different night, whatever, whatever works good.
So I'll get ahold of Chance, I'll send him and I'll send you guys, I don't know if I, whether I, I went to a seminar for this a few weeks ago and I don't know whether I have this stuff digitally or whether I can, I could get it scanned down here or I can get it probably from Vermont Emergency Management too. I'll see if it's in my computer. And I'll definitely send this on to Chance too, so he knows kind of what's, what's being asked. So that's pretty much it for that, I think, unless there are any questions that you guys have about that? So we'll, I'll get in touch with Chance and we'll either arrange to have it be part of a select board meeting or we could have it be a special select board meeting, assuming that, you know, you guys are there.
Together, yeah.
And just focus on that.
Yeah, it might be. Yeah, it might be best to do it as a separate night.
I think so, cause.
Just focus on one thing.
Get it done, we did that with the other plan, they give it pretty well. Just went through page by page and fixed whatever we needed to fix.
Okay, so next on the agenda is this ecosystem restoration grant, which bring you up to speed. Paul, this is a grant application that we've been discussing as a select board for a while. It's based on the Kingsbury branch, Barnshod management survey that was done this summer. There were five sites, priority sites that were chosen, mostly focused in the village, kind of centered around the fire annex building and the school parking lot. So, and then in the original grant application, we were gonna go for all five sites or at least the four sites that are now in the village. But the grant application, when the woman, Pam DeAndrea, working on it at the regional planning commission, found out that it could be only for one site. So, you know, we talked about it and basically the two sites, the school parking lot and the fire annex building are basically the same problem.
Same issue, yeah.
Yeah, so you can't really fix one site and not fix the other site. So Pam went back to them and they accepted that, so it's basically for two sites.
Two sites, one problem.
One problem.
It's the same problem.
Yeah, and the grant is for the design work that will happen this summer. And, you know, it's, it's kind of mind boggling about how much just the design plan costs. Basically the total for the project is gonna be thirty thousand dollars and two hundred seventy dollars. Yeah, it's crazy.
It's all covered by a grant.
It's all, it's basically all covered by a grant. The town is, is putting in an eleven percent match. And we had talked about a ten percent match and then Pam went to a training for this grant. And if we were one percent more, eleven percent, we would get one extra point in the consideration for getting a grant. So, so it seems worth it. So what the town will be, will be, their match will be two thousand two hundred dollars in cash. And then we'll be doing nineteen, a thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars will be in kind, which will basically be, the road crew will be needed to do some test pits for the design work. And then there'll be my, some time that I'll be putting in meetings or doing, going to meetings and stuff. So our total is four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the match, for this grant.
Need a phone there.
It's a medical call.
You okay?
Take care of it, yeah.
Okay, so, so once the design work is done, then we can turn that design around and apply for grants to pay for the implementation, that's, that's the plan. So, but going forward, the plan is to have the design work done this summer and hopefully next, you know, next summer or before summer, we would apply for an implementation grant.
Once we know what it costs, yeah.
And then the long-term thinking is once, you know, the implementation is done and the erosion issues there are resolved, then we can, in the very near future, pave that section of the road.
Which is what's needed, yeah.
Yeah, so kind of complete that, that project and hopefully solve the flooding issues at the annex building. And, and of course, this, this, the focus of this is to keep the road erosion, the parking lot erosion from running into the Kingsbury branch. That's where the money, why the money is being given to us.
If you solve one, you solve the other, pretty much.
Yes, so all you want to solve themselves, never mind. So this grant application has been sent in, so I'm not sure one will hear about it. But I mostly brought it up tonight, cause I, it was my misunderstanding on my part that would, there would be both. I thought that our match would be pretty much covered by in kind, but apparently they're, they're asking for both a cash.
And a match.
And an in kind match, so I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yeah.
That was clear, cause I hadn't been clear about it before. So that's pretty, and I'm not sure one will hear about it, hopefully soon.
Okay, well, we're on road crew.
Yeah.
GPS systems for our trucks. It's a way to manage your fleet better.
Okay.
Makes it, saves money according to these guys. Every truck would have a GPS in it.
Know where, every, every move these guys made.
We'd know all the moves that they're making, but you'd know if they were setting their idling somewheres or, you know, it's just, it's all about, you know, fuel savings. If it's gonna be setting, it should be shut off. You know, so this tracks it. And it's getting pretty common with a lot of businesses to track these things. You know where they're going, you know how long they're setting there. Can even get in, and they're not that expensive, I think they're like fifty bucks a piece for these things. But there was like a twenty dollar a month monitoring fee, so I'm not sure. I was gonna look, I just found this stuff earlier this week. And I was gonna do more research on it.
Yeah, do, do some more research on it and then.
I know there's a lot of companies like Bourne's in Morrisville.
You're checking this stuff out, yeah.
Yeah, most of these guys, I'm surprised you guys don't have them yet.
On the state rig, yeah, I know.
Yeah. But yeah, this is not a bad, it's not a bad investment, especially if it'll save us money in the end.
Yeah.
Might even work, some of these come with cameras as well, which our insurance companies might like.
I think there are cameras in the trucks at this point, but.
I mean, cameras are just screwed out the windshield, it's always your driving cameras, not just if you're taking.
So, who, how would we monitor, I mean, how would we?
Well, it'd be on a computer screen, you know, whether you had a computer, your computer would probably be able to access it.
Okay, so.
My computer.
So the monitoring service would, would have the information and then the town would.
Putting it out back to us, I said, I gotta look up some more on it, talk to, I haven't had a chance to talk to them yet, but. I just looked at this last night on there, thought, wow, that'd be a really good idea. Hopefully management companies, we're probably gonna get to this.
What's the password on the network here? I don't have that on here.
Oh, sorry, it's right there.
Oh, there we go.
And then, you know, so we would be, our, our interest as a town in having this would be to, you know, do we wanna?
Efficiency, basically, yeah. Yeah, making sure that the oil's getting changed at the right intervals, you know, just it's combination, everything, it just.
So the GPS is gonna tell us that?
It hooked to the OBD system on it, but it does talk about that, so I don't know if it'll track some mileage, maybe?
I think all the GPS does basically is track, it would track mileage. It'd be like your cellphone, you know, where they can kind of track where you are.
Track your mileage, yeah. But yeah, I'll look up some more on it, if you guys are interested, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea. Especially if you get somebody broke down someplace around here, that there's no cell service, you might be able to find it.
We do have our radios for that, but even then sometimes the radios don't work either.
Where these GPS would go straight up to a satellite.
And you know, sometimes GPS doesn't work either when there's heavy cloud cover and stuff. So it's not a foolproof.
No.
But yeah, if you, if.
Yeah, I'll look up some more on it.
Curious to hear more about it.
I was gonna talk, I tried to talk to one of the companies that uses it, see what, how they feel about it and stuff. But most of them are going to it.
It's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm actually surprised VLCT hasn't told us to do it yet. That'll probably come next though, just for loss management.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be curious to hear more about it. Do you want us to hang on to this or?
I'll take that, I'll bring it back and give you guys copies of it, cause I didn't make any copies in the site device. No, I didn't make any copies yet, so I could make some here tonight and let you guys have some copies.
So I have, I do wanna go over the paving grant that we started talking about for the upper Cabot Road. I have some more information about that. Maybe just, I have a very brief kind of report from the road crew. So, we're still in, in good shape with our sand and our salt. I know I've been hearing different reports of the.
Other towns.
Yeah, other towns that have, you know, finished up their salt contract and are running out of sand. But we're in good shape both ways. And then one thing the road crew did wanna mention is that we're, we're starting to pretty much be in the, kind of the interim of mud season and winter snow seasons. So, and it's much harder to plow the roads when the roads are muddy, cause the roads, the plows tend to float on the ice, snowpack. So, you know, going forward in this interim period, you know, there are times where the roads probably won't be in the best of shape. And there isn't much that the road crew can do about that.
The field dries out.
Field dries out. So, and even in, you know, serious mud, it's, you know, getting gravel to, you know, help relieve the situation is tricky with the ten wheelers, you know, they're heavy trucks. And, you know, getting the gravel to where it needs to be tends to make the mud even worse, so.
Same problem, different year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they deal with it every spring, so.
So just kind of, I think they just wanted to get it out there that mud season is approaching. One of the things that they have been doing is trying to grade back and move back the snowbanks.
Yeah, which helps.
Which helps, the theory there is that the melting snowbanks will run into the ditch rather than back into the road and saturate the roads even more. So, and with our snow this year, I'll be very curious to see what mud season is, is like.
I'll let you know in June.
Right.
I predict it won't be good.
The ground isn't as frozen as it might've been in the past.
True.
That might help.
But there's like, there's much ice everywhere.
Yeah, but there is a good foot of ice on top of the roads, I think, in some places. With, with sort of a little bit of a break in the frequency of snowstorms, the road crew has been able to do some, some much, you know, needed maintenance on the equipment. They were actually able to change the transmission oil in the ten wheelers, which is a pretty major project. So they were at about sixty thousand miles and that's when it's recommended to do that. So, so they've been doing some maintenance work and, and some work just kind of preparing, like they've been working on the rake, getting that ready for mud season. That's pretty much what, what they wanted me to report tonight. So with the paving grant, let's see, I have a folder here for it somewhere. So, we've been talking a little bit, we did actually pretty much just started talking about a paving grant to look at paving the upper part of the Cabot Road. And initially we were talking about paving to the present quarry entrance. But at, at the moment Swenson Quarry has an Act 250 permit in to open up another road, to open up an old, a section, very short section of an old road that is not even a town road. It's on their.
It's the old short road, I call that.
I think it's beyond that even.
Oh, it's even further down, cause it wasn't real steep.
It's near the road down to the swimming hole.
Oh, the other one goes around. So then it's the flatter one, okay.
So they would approve just a short section of that road and then they would actually build their own road into the bottom of the quarry. You know, as they're extracting granite now, they're working their way down. So eventually it'll be easier for them to come out at the bottom rather than to get up to the top. So, that Act 250 permit is in process, so, but, you know.
So we did talk about paving to the top of the hill, which at that point, if, if they're gonna be driving all the way to the top.
Yeah, we'll basically pave to where that new road is gonna be. That does significantly change the cost. So.
The grant get a bid for that or give a price?
What I did, I called Pipe Construction or whatever they're called. And they gave me the name of the district rep, his name is Norm Patino. And Greg Parkhurst and I met with him a couple of weeks ago and we, he clocked the distance from where the pavement ends on the Cabot Road up to the present quarry entrance and then continuing on to the newer road that the quarry would like to open up.
Did I see the map again?
Oh, is that from the Act 250 permit, yeah. So, so.
So this is the, yeah, this is number one.
Yeah, so this is, this is the Cabot Road. And this is the old road that goes down to the older quarries and it does a loop around. So this is their present, this is presently how they get in, they go down this road, back here and up. So what they're, the reason that they would like the new road is to be able to come in here and. And eventually they will, yeah, a lot less road, a lot less, you know, this turn with a tractor trailer.
They gotta turn around.
Yeah.
I was like, get two entrances.
Yeah, and they have two entrances, so that's what they're looking to do. That, and I'll get back to that Act 250 permit and Swenson Quarry in a minute after I get done with the paving information. So that's what they're, so we're thinking of paving, you know, from where the pavement ends, you know, pretty much right around Dan Jarnus' road.
Yeah.
Up to.
Well, they enjoyed it, Flat Street, right?
Yeah, Flat Street, yeah, so we'll go up, pass the present quarry to this entrance here. It's a little over a mile through the distance. Both the fellow from Pipe and Greg Parkhurst strongly recommended that we not just pave up to the present entrance. It's right at a steep hill and it'd be really tricky to maintain.
The gravel would just keep washing.
Right, yeah, so if we're gonna do it, we should do the whole thing.
Now, will we do aprons on?
Yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah, we'd definitely have aprons. And I don't know whether, if Swenson would wanna jump onboard and have, you know, cause that, maybe have that part that drops down, you know, have them pave that at the same time. But that would be something that they could arrange, that wouldn't be part of.
Yeah, would be town arrest, yeah.
The town would do that. So. So let me just give you the figures that Norm, he, he still hasn't sent a formal estimate. I asked for an estimate up to the present quarry road and then an estimate to all the way to what will be the new quarry road. And I also asked for an estimate for the Valley Lake, for, you know, that part, just so that we have a figure to think about going forward with, with that project.
For Valley Lake?
Yeah, that would, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a part of this grant at all, but we'll just, we'll have an estimate, so have a figure. So he, you know, he gave, on the day that we looked at the place, he gave a very rough ballpark estimate of two hundred and three five thousand dollars to pave that mile. And chances are the estimate, the formal estimate that he'll come up with or, you know, the formal estimate that we can use for the application, probably will be more cause the mix of the pavement is a special mix to hold up with granite trucks and granite. But he was aware of the specs from, from the previous.
That's good.
So, hopefully it'll be close to that.
Did we talk to Shanae at all?
I have, yeah, that's, that's the next round of information. So, the grant, the Vtrans paving grant, the maximum that they can give us is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And our twenty-five percent, twenty, it's an eighty percent, twenty percent match. Our twenty percent match for that would be thirty-five thousand dollars, which totals two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Right at the moment in a paving fund, we have forty-three thousand dollars roughly, if we round it up, three dollars. So, we're, we're a little short from what the ballpark estimate is.
Yeah.
I, I spoke to Bob Pope today also and first of all.
Bob's still there?
He still oversees the quarry, I mean, they, Swenson Quarry is owned by a larger entity, you know, you know, sort of the corporate world getting gobbled up by bigger entities. So, but he still manages.
Okay, so would they be willing to chip in some?
Not so much willing, he would have, that would have to come from whoever owns Swenson Quarry at this point. That decision, he, he would be willing to discuss that with them. The other thing that, that he thinks that the quarry would be willing to do is to, perhaps loan, give us a loan on the reimbursement that they give us.
Pay us ahead on that.
Yeah, we put twenty-five percent of that reimbursement a year into the paving fund, so, so maybe for, you know, a couple of years or whatever it added up to.
Yeah, we would get that reimbursement. That'd be great though. That'd let us do this job all in one shot.
This via this summer project or?
He, I, that's the other reason I called Bob, Bob, is that I didn't wanna pave up to that road before the work, they, you know, not knowing when they would actually do the work. So he's, he, you know, if they get the Act 250 permit and it's pretty certain that they will, but, you know, there's always an if. They would do the work on that road this summer. Sober, so it would be done. And then, you know, as far as the grant with V-Trans, Shawna said that we have thirty months to complete the project. She prefers that, you know, who, the people receiving the grant, the town, whatever, that they do the work in the same year that they were awarded the grant. Just so that money isn't sitting there that other towns could use, because they have a limited amount of money. But she also said that, you know, we're good to get the grant. You know, some towns apply every year and some years they don't get it, because there is a limited amount of money.
Yeah. So that could happen this year if everything
If everything goes, you know, if, you know, it's, it's a, it's a sure bet that we would be awarded the grant. So we can count on that. And if the Swenson Quarry has their Act 250 permit approved, they would do the work this summer and then, you know, we would do the work after, after that work was done. So, yeah, it, it looks pretty certain that we could do that this summer.
Yeah, I talked to Harry a little bit about it, because they were looking at that one other time.
We had, we had tried to
Yeah, and he says that the culverts should be, they've done the culverts already, so that part of it's
When they did that ditching work and they were doing that to the new municipal roads, general permit standards, they also, you know, did the culverts or, or at least made sure the culverts were up to the standards, so
So we're in good shape for that.
Yeah, yeah, and there hasn't been any issues this winter, you know, with runoffs, so yeah, Greg thought they would be fine, you know, it'll be a kind of, they'll do a good, close look at them once the snow is gone and make sure
Might have to do some ditching or something.
Yeah, if there is any issues, I'll make sure the road is, is fixed long before the paving is gonna happen. Just gonna make sure. So there's an April fifteenth deadline for the paving grant. Greg and I are gonna meet with Shawna to do the usual town stuff on, on April third and I'm gonna have the grant pretty much filled in so that I can basically hand it to her when she comes.
Yeah, good. That'd be a nice project to get out of the way this year.
Yeah, yeah. See if there's anything else that I have in my notes here. Well, I think I've covered pretty much everything. So I sent Norm Pattonote an email today just, you know, asking when we could expect those estimates from him for the application. So it's been about ten days, I think, since we met with him, so we should hear from him soon. So, yeah, so that's, that's in the works. And then, you know, when we have, oh, that reminds me. So when I talked to Bob today, Bob Pope, he would like to meet with us at our next select board meeting on March twenty-fifth to go over the Act 250 permit, answer any questions we might have. Any, if there are any conditions or anything that, you know, we would wanna have in the permit. So, so I'll plan on having him on the agenda for, for the twentieth of March and probably have him right at the beginning of the meeting, so that he doesn't have to
Hang around all night.
All right, all right.
Get home.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions about that? And, and we'll have an estimate for, for the village section of Valley Lake Road. Just, it'll give us a sense, you know, if we're gonna be you know, I'd like to be able to do that as soon as the, all of that work is done, the implementation work. And if that were two summers from now and we're paying back Swenson Quarry with our paving fund, because this is gonna pretty much drain our
Drain everything out, yeah.
You know, I was kind of counting on having money in the paving fund, because that's, we tried to get a Class II designation for that
Right, so you can get a lot of money for it, yeah.
And we, we weren't able to get it and therefore
Oh, really? So they wouldn't give us a Class II on that?
They wouldn't give us a Class II on it. And also, because it's not Class II, it doesn't qualify for a paving grant, so we'll have to pay for that totally out of our own pocket.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So, yeah, so
Yeah.
So that's a kind of a bummer.
Yeah, she told us that day that any connecting road to another town is considered a Class II, but
Well
It doesn't connect directly.
We, we went through this whole checklist. I think, I think you might have still been on the maybe you weren't, maybe it was when just the year
Maybe it was before or after, because I know we did talk to her all the time.
I know Guy was on it. I'll have to look back in the
Guy wasn't on with Guy, so
Yeah, you were, for one year you were on with Guy.
Was I?
Yep.
I thought I came in the year he got out.
You came, yeah. This is a present incarnation as a select board member. Before you took your two-year hiatus.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when we, we tried to get class, uh, Class II classification for that road.
Yeah.
But it stayed in the proven.
Didn't go for it, no. It cost us a little extra.
So whatever that estimate is, is what we'll have to pay for.
But I think, would think Swenson's would be generous enough to
Yeah.
Be real supportive and supportive.
Should be a whole lot.
Because they want it done, dude.
They want it, yeah, it'd be great for them. Nice for the people that live up there, you know, be on a paved road.
It's great down that hill, too.
The, the other thing that this is gonna do is greatly increase our salt budget.
Of course it will.
Yes, it will.
So in fact, it'll more than double the present salt budget, considering, I think
But the other side is, we don't have to grade it.
Don't have to grade it, more gravel.
So there's both sides, yeah.
It'll be a safer road in the winter.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have to worry about guardrails up through there.
Right, no.
So that's another one we don't have to deal with, but
And just while we're on the subject of paving, you know, I walk up and down the road, come down here and coming down tonight, I noticed that the road's pretty well cracked.
I wonder if that's just from the frost, because it seems to crack for a while, then it'll settle back down and go, the cracks go away. But yeah, I don't know if we should seal it or if that would help.
We might wanna think about sealing it, yeah. We'll see what it looks like when
When the frost goes out.
Frost is out of the ground.
But we've talked, you know, about other roads and like the one right from Mike's house up to Gary Yuan's trailer. That's just full of potholes, they can't keep it straight.
Right.
You know, that would be another one on my list of roads that we at some point should try to pave.
And that is a Class II road.
And that is a Class II, yeah. So little roads around town.
Yeah.
Does, yeah, start fixing up.
Yeah, the one is my little strip of Greenwood Lake Road, that little eighth inch strip, it get beat to hell when all the people go to Montpelier.
It does, it's insane, yeah.
They have to grade it about every two weeks.
Yeah, I don't know what the, we'll have to see what the classification of that road is.
There's a ton of traffic, you wanna be busy sitting there, because everybody cuts off to go to Montpelier.
Yeah, right, for the main road, Duane's driveway or even a little
I was thinking just the top of the hill, yeah, just that little stretch, because they tear that up, something wicked.
I towed him home one night last year and just towing him in.
They grade it and then within two weeks it's torn right up again, because it gets a tremendous, I bet I need three hours there every time I come through. Tremendous amount of traffic.
It is amazing how quickly the potholes return, yes, from what's been doing.
Yeah.
Especially the hills, because people spinning the tires and they tear them up there.
Right. That's pretty much it on my agenda.
I got nothing else? Got through your first night, only fifty more to go.
Fifty more to go, whoa.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that, motion to adjourn. I ain't got Roy here to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.